So as I said a few minutes ago, First Select Woman is on another call and she'll join when she can. So, and I will start off our budget workshop deliberations. Just to kind of summarize the situation, obviously, we know that Susan had put together the original budget. We had gone through some review of that budget, looking at some of the numbers. We all have our notes along the way about it. We had talked about some minor changes, but what came out after that was was the big concern that we were potentially looking at a $300,000 at least shortfall from what we would expect from revenue that would come from brownstone exploration. So, looking at that, that was had the potential that if you tried to account for that, we'd be looking at taking our taking our mill rate up from the 0.85 to like a 1.25 number. And in light of the situation, when you look at a good portion of the surrounding towns around us, a lot of them are trying to get as close as they can to a zero increase. And, and in doing so, many of them are just hammering their fund balance, which given this situation, what I've seen in terms of my sitting with the school administration gets me nervous because we are looking at a big unknown about the school and how they are going to operate in the fall and spring. So those towns are really going after fund balance. It's going to be scary if they have to really dig into it because of how they have to strategize in order to operate schools. But from our standpoint, I think, you know, as a group, what we're looking at right here now is making another pass through the budget, probably looking from the standpoint of where can we probably cut in order to try to recoup the anticipated loss in revenue that we are seeing. And that, I think, is still the anticipating that the brownstone exploration is going to open up for a little while, a little part of the summer. And obviously, that's an unknown because we're not sure what's going to happen. But, but ultimately, what we're, you know, what we're here to do is, is to walk through the budget and suggest any changes that may help us with regards to trying to balance it. We got Mr. Mike Belton now. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start at the first section, the first department that's grouped in the in the budget. So if you go to page 18, I thought what we do is we just start walking through each of the departments. The capital, I know we're probably going to have to have a good discussion on the capital section of the budget, the capital plan, that's more towards the end of the budget. And then hopefully, we'll have everyone on at that point. But for the time being, what we'll do is we'll walk through each section. And I know a good number of them, we didn't touch anything. I have no notes for them. I don't anticipate any changes from our discussion. But I wanted, we want to do the due diligence of walking through with the anticipation that what we're trying to do or trying to accomplish is probably looked as where we can maybe make some cuts in order to try to align our budget with the expected revenue losses that we are foreseeing. So if we go to page, page 19, we have the Board of Selectmen Expenditures, list of expenditures. So I'll start on this page. Is there anything on this page that anyone wants a reference in terms of thinking that there's some sort of cuts or changes that would be appropriate for the budget? Okay, so I will take with no one making a comment that there are no changes on the Board of Selectmen Department Expenditures. Okay, the next one would be on page 21 would be the First Select Woman Expenditures. Is there any comments or changes that anyone can see with regards to the First Select Woman Department Expenditures? Okay. So now we will go to, we'll go to the Ethics Commission. There isn't very much in, at all in the expenditures here, so I don't know if anyone has any comments. It's pretty small. Nope. Okay. We'll go to page 25 and we go to Probate Court. They were already looking at some reductions. Is there any comments with regards to the Probate Court expenditures? Okay. Next one, page 27, the Elections, the Elections Expenditures. Is there any comments with regards to here? And what I would note is this is a challenging page because we're obviously don't know how, how the discussions are going on about how voting is going to be implemented. So we don't know where this would go. We, we could have expenditures go up here, they could go down, we could go any direction here. So we're not quite sure. So I don't know if anyone has any comments or thoughts on this page?
If, if the time comes and it's going to be additional expenditures, how would we handle this? Should we put money aside just in case? Or is it the suggestion that it's the same?
I would think you're probably going into contingency in that situation. Because I mean, I wouldn't anticipate, well, we don't know. I would not think it'd be a huge increase. But now there are discussions that I know that I've had with Susan where we talked about whether we switch to multiple voting sites. And there may be some additional expenditures that could come with something like that.
I can't imagine it'd be that much either.
Ralph, how do we, how do we come up with the election supply number? It's like really bounced around over the years. Like any, do you know how we come up with 6250?
I know that Tom is in one of the windows here. I don't know if, Tom, are you out there? Would you be able to give any feedback on?
Hey, how's it going? Tom here. So, you know, obviously, you know that that fluctuates all by its time, what type of item going on that we have going on. In 19, we had two referendums and a couple and some counts. So, you know, as well as other election in there. So you got a lot of expenses, more ballots. And, you know, we expected this was a presidential election. So we were expecting more than the current year was expected, which you can see, you know, it's some years it's 3,800. I mean, 19 was very high because of the two referendums. But, you know, we were thinking of the 6250 between ballots that were required. That was what was causing that increase from this year, which would have been more of a reasonable, more reasonable year.
Yeah, okay. Tom, that basically, I was looking at why was it 8,900 a couple of years ago, but you, you answered that.
Yeah.
Like with a presidential election in all the congressional districts and senator, I'm not sure if there's a senator this year, but the state House and state senate, there's going to be a lot going on election season. So I guess that number seemed reasonable to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The only other thing, if I could add something, was on page five, if I could. Investment income, I think when we did that 1.215 number, we were expecting to drop that to $50,000. And we did some, no more analysis, my staff did some more analysis. And I think we're going to try and see if we can hit 60,000 on that number. So instead of, instead of, we had reduced the rental income by 250 and then we had reduced the investment income down to the, to 50,000. So I think, I think we're going to try to get that to 60,000. And hopefully, that would be less, you know, hopefully we can hit that mark.
Okay.
So that's in, that's in lieu of the 130,000, it was in the published original?
Yeah, because, you know, obviously, the interest rates just fell apart recently. And if you went back over the previous years, last year, obviously, we had bond money as well as very, very high interest rates in 19. And then in, in 18, the rates were higher. You know, there was many years where we're, when the rates fall, fall, you know, we were down in the 30s to 40,000 marks for numerous years. And we kind of, you know, we're hitting those levels of lowness, but not to that, not to that extreme. So I think when I was looking, we were looking at the 50, we were thinking it was going to continue to drop. It seemed like it didn't go, you know, it went low, but not as low as I was expecting. So that's where I was hoping to come up with, you know, the 60,000 number instead of the 50. So I hope that'll help a little bit.
Yep. Oh, it will. It will help.
Glad you're here. Thank you.
Thanks. I noted it. Okay. Okay, nothing else on elections then, right? We're good?
Yep.
So we'll move on to page 29, and that is the Finance Department. Comments about the expenses on the Finance Department? Okay, I guess not. Right? Anything? You're good?
Okay.
We'll move to page 31, Collector of Revenue. So Tom, I have a question with Collector of Revenue. So anything we've done in terms of proving different rates for interest and everything? Nothing, nothing we've done to this point will incur any additional cost, right?
You know, I think the number that's there will be reasonable to incur. I think we have a and it's questionable whether it's going to be a this year's cost or next year's cost, but it'll be a flyer that'll go out in the mailing. So that'll be a slight, a slight cost to reproduce it, to explain, you know, everyone kind of what the, you know, the interest rate, low interest rate program is. So that quality QDS will incorporate that in. But, you know, right now, I think that you're going to be within that mark. QDS usually does a nice job of keeping within the number that they set.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for the comment. Anything else on Collector Revenue?
So there's no, there's no change to that, right, Ralph? It's still the 99,300?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we move on to page 33, the Assessor. We have these expenses. Anything on this page?
I just have a question maybe for Tom. Just curious, what, what type of service contracts do they have?
The service contract, it's the, so I believe they have, I think they have some with QES and then also Tyler, which is their software vendor. And then also there's a, I think there's other company that use Big Charts. And it's more or less all the contracts for running the assessment programs.
Okay.
The various programs that are required to be run there.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We move on to page 35, Board of Assessment Appeals. They had no increase from last, last year proposed. Any comments on this page?
No, other than I have made a note, Ralph, that it's not a revaluation year. Is that correct?
I think it would be the following year would be the revaluation year, I believe.
Okay.
Where they would get paid the additional money for it.
Okay, so we're just putting in the money in capital because we have to prepare for it, right? Then, but it would be, so.
So next year, you're, you're going to engage in the contract where they start the process. So you, and that's why I put the money in capital, because you're going to engage them to begin the work. And you have to have the money in place to award the contract. So you, you're going to have that money in place. So that's what you're, you're giving us the authorization there to put the money in capital to do that work. And then I believe the work continues into the next year. And I think that's when the, the, you know, they would get that a little bit more. And if I am, if I am incorrect in that, and it is a little bit more, then that budget would go over by a little bit and we would work it out. But I'm pretty confident that you got one more year. And then it would be about the year where you would pay these, these, these members a little bit higher mark. But you're going out, you're going to go out to bid, you're going to award the contract, the process is going to start in fiscal year 21. And then I believe in 22 is when it gets wrapped up. And then that would be when they would be doing their assessment appeal, the higher assessment appeal work.
Okay. Any other questions on this page? Okay. Now we move to page 37, which is Town Council. Thoughts or comments on this page? Does not seem to be. Okay, we'll move past it. There were no increases on it. The next page is the Town Clerk. They actually had a decrease of 4.76% on the budget. Any additional comments with regards to the Town Clerk?
Looks good.
Okay. We move to page 41, which is Central Services. This one also had a zero increase. Any comments on this one?
I'm okay with it.
Other than what happens to postage if the US Postal Office?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, no other comments? Okay. Page 43 is the Technology Department that had a 2.36% increase. Is there any comments or thoughts or changes on this page?
Just a question, long term. And maybe we don't really know yet, but with everything going on with the COVID right now, will there be any money in this budget that we need to increase? Should we need to invest in maybe more laptops or whatnot for students that may not be able to come back to school if we have something happen in the fall again? Like, do we need any contingency? Should there be any issues in the fall with additional costs with either technology or purchases or, or what? I know it's a big question mark, and we don't know, but that might seem to be a big area of concern.
I was going to say that again, this Technology Department page is not, would not cover the computers that are involved with the school. So, and certainly, I, speaking from what I know, what's gone on there, they did use their funds for, they anticipated the unused funds for this year were actually applied to buy a good number of Chromebooks that were going to be in the budget for next year. So we will have to have a, you know, I'm sure we'll have a discussion on Board of Ed probably later on, either this evening or certainly tomorrow. But for this page in particular, this one is strictly for the town itself.
Okay.
And I guess I would say, I mean, we've, we've, we've weathered the storm so far when everyone was working in the office. And so they didn't need to have a, an alternate solution for technology. But you do raise a valid point, Mike, even for, from a standpoint of the town, whether if there's something that comes down the pike where we have to worry about expanding the amount of, you know, laptops. I'm not even sure what the configuration is for everyone in town, but whether you need to add additional laptops because you have to worry about moving to a secondary strategy in terms of running your departments. But for now, Susan has kept the offices open, the town hall was closed, but the offices were open. And so everyone continued to work as, as usual. So that is a good point. We probably should make a note that to think about.
Hey, Ralph?
Yep.
Yeah, so I just, if I could interject, yeah, so there's a few things that, this is definitely just for the, this is the town budget. So there's a few things where if, you know, we were back to being outdoor, if we had to go out, yeah, there would be some additional costs for licensing, there'd be additional costs for equipment. And there probably would be some computer network maintenance costs, things of that nature. So one of the, you know, ways that we try to mitigate that is why we usually incorporate an allotment of funding within the capital under the town wide for improvements. So, you know, that's a, there is a piece in there, the capital budget. I mean, that's a very important piece that we fund annually. With, with these items that we do need to buy just to upgrade and to have this ability to do what we're doing now, we also need to, and we put a little bit for this year, but for the next two to three years, we're going to have to read up our allocation for the backup solution. We bought a backup solution last year that was a four-year solution. Every four years, you have to come up in and do that. And that was a big, it's a reasonable size outlay, I believe it was one of the 50,000 range that you, you need to do so that, you know, if there are cyber attacks, your, your backups are in good order. So, you know, the, we have, this year, we have our network helper, our third party, our third tier assistance that the new group, BizTech, has been very helpful. We've been able to get a few, few projects done this year with Kevin and David's assistance and with their assistance and leadership. So, you know, I think that's, it's a very valid point. But I think those are the two places where on the town side, we hit it. And the Board of Ed obviously does a very good job of trying to obtain grants when they can, and they do. And then utilize and operate funds when available. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So any other comments on technology? Okay. Moving to page 45, Fire Department. Any comments?
Let me ask Tom my favorite question. I ask it every year. Tom, I know you, yeah, for Tom, I know you lock in the fuel contract. And I think you said previously that you already locked it in for this budget year. Is there, is there any latitude to renegotiate that price being that fuel prices have kind of collapsed or have dropped significantly? Or are we pretty much locked in where we're at?
So, you know, yes, every year, the Board asks us to do as much of a good job as we can seeking out good pricing. Last year, we had wonderful, wonderful pricing with gasoline, one of the strongest prices, I think, around. We had decent pricing on diesel and oil. This year, the trend was coming down from higher levels that were there. We were able to procure wet heating oil and diesel at the $1.82 and $1.80, which are, you know, reasonable numbers. They were down from the previous year, but reasonable. Gasoline, on the other hand, was a 150 number. And we had put it, we had procured it at 175.85. So that would be a total of 40,000 gallons that we acquired there. And then 38,000 of diesel and 6,000. And no, you're, you know, when you lock, you lock here, there is no negotiation. That's the, the, you know, some years, you win big and some weird years, you don't. And it's, you try to do your best and you try to look at it the best. And I think, you know, at the time, all my fuel consultants would say, this is, boy, you're hitting it at a good time. And obviously, the virus and other scenarios caused a large drop off. But, you know, I think that we're, we're, you know, we're close to the number that we're.
Yeah, those prices aren't bad, actually, what you just mentioned, per gallon price. So, okay.
So Bob, I know you popped into the screen. I do have a question for you. I'm just curious if anything that's been going on. I mean, obviously, the Fire, Fire Department is usually going into things well covered with everything. But is there anything that's come out of from a TNT standpoint? I don't know if that's included here. Is there anything with regards to the challenges we've had, that you anticipate some additional costs?
Well, we have that now. We've probably spent about, about $9,000 on COVID-related equipment and supplies, which I'm hoping, based on the program, that the majority of that, if not 100% of that, including probably $4,000 on the building maintenance side for cleaning products and sanitizers for the town buildings as well for, you know, close to $14,000 to date. I'm hoping, and I, I can only say, we hope that the FEMA reimbursement will be there for us to help offset those costs. But right now, our budgets are paying for those as we, we manage through this time. And the Fire Department budget is, is good, fortunately or unfortunately, however you look at it. We have other line items there that we really can't spend. Unfortunately, we can't train at our training facilities. That's not allowed right now. The classes have been suspended probably through the summer, if not into the fall. So we had a lot of cancellations with training that was, you know, planned for, for, for an awful lot of our members, including some of the mandatory stuff that we're going to have to do in-house, which we will handle at no expense. We have many members that are certified to train, so we'll do that and get by those requirements. So I think overall, this year's budget will be positive, I'm hoping, to, to, to remain in good standing. Next year, putting this budget together, there was really only maybe a $3,000 or $4,000 difference between what you see and what I requested. And I feel that, you know, based on, you know, what we're doing now and maybe some of the supplies that we can get, begin to stock up for, which we're going to have to do and which I've been pre-planning to do that in the event that we're back here again in the fall and we have some issues related to the virus. At that point, we maybe will hopefully be a little more equipped. Right now, we have what we need. Our volume is starting to steady off and our response is, you know, looking better. We just hope that that continues and we stay where we are. The issue is, as we move forward on the town side, which you'll get into, which we've been subsidizing with our public safety budget, is supplies that we usually don't normally use or expend, which is masks. We don't use those for town buildings. So there's, you know, there's costs related to those items that may impact us in the future related to those budgets. But we're trying to offset that with the weekly PPE supply through the national stock that I go to every week in West Hartford. And if I can't make it, I send other personnel to pick up. So that's helping our supplies greatly. That's what they're for. They're very limited, but hopefully this week, we're going to see a They're very limited, but hopefully this week we're going to see a turnaround on that. They said to bring a bigger vehicle, so maybe I'll bring a box truck, I don't know. So we'll see what we can get this, this week, but that's helping us, but the schools. As well as, you know, Public Works and the town facilities, building maintenance and the Fire Department are working together to try to make sure that we can. All make sure we have that PPE that's required. So I don't really, you know, to your answer, Ralph, I'm not sure, I think we're good, it's one of those things, if I can continue to. Get, you know, get supplies now and store those and we don't need those, then we'll be much better in the fall and we don't have to worry about these big expenses.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments on the Fire Department expenditures? Okay. We'll move on to Fire Marshal, page forty-seven.
Hey Ralph. Sorry about that, Tom and I were just chatting, there's a potential that we could reduce. Gas and diesel in the Fire Department, our, our. Our response protocol has changed significantly and we had to do that related to how much apparatus is responding at one time, we might be able to save a little money. In that budget, because I don't expect our protocol is actually good for the next ninety days. So we're not going to be changing our response, that comes from our sponsor hospital and how we're going to EMS calls and. We're allowing only one vehicle and how we're responding to not only traffic accidents, but basically how we're operating, so. We have a possibility of, I think we could take. Seven fifty out of the. Out of line, yeah, five, one, zero, zero, one.
Okay.
With that said, you know, the newer vehicles that we bought over the past year, or two years are more efficient, so that's helping us as well.
Okay. I will duly note, everyone will duly note that.
Ralph, I have a question for Bob, I just. You, are you still going to be able to have your banquet?
That's probably the saddest point of our whole budget. Our banquet every year is, of course, for our members that give so much to the community. But even more so, it's for their family who give even more for them to do what they're doing. And it's difficult, so I'm trying to find a way. To offer dinner to each company separately, which will. Which will basically break our members of sixty up into twenties and thirties, you know, how that works, but be able to. Allow those members and their immediate family to enjoy a dinner, maybe at their firehouse where they can spread out and do that socially and properly. We're not sure how that'll work, but we certainly can't do a department function, it doesn't look like we would be able to gather until late September. You know, basically it would be like a wedding, so we're, we're really out on that, but I had spoke with Susan, I spoke with Tom. And we're trying to come up with a way to at least show our appreciation as we always do every year and do it. Within the standards that are out there, so. Will we spend all that money? Probably not, but to cater for each firehouse, I'm sure we'll be close to that, if, if not, just a little less.
I don't remember what time of year, when did you do that last year, what month was that, I don't recall?
We usually always have our banquet in April, we take advantage of trying to get in early, we opened the, the golf course where we had it for the past few years. We were their first opening, they actually turned their water on about a week before we were there every year, so. We, you know, we had the benefit of that, we were their opening for their restaurant, we got good prices because of that, we did that early. But that just, you know, it's not going to work out this year and. We also want to make sure that we try to equally distribute throughout the town and give our restaurants and our caterers. Who are struggling now the opportunity to maybe participate together and so that we can help them as well as they're trying to. You know. Provide, you know, what the members deserve.
Bob, did you have to cancel this year's banquet, like this?
We did. Yeah, we're just going to do the alternative task, so, you know, we had the banquet planned for, I think it was the. Second or third week of April, but by the third week of March, that was the end of that, we got our letters and. You know, we were just starting to put together purchase orders and plans and letters and, you know, they, they canceled that for us. And they said they couldn't do it, and they were hoping at that time to revisit for the end of June, but since then, you know, we know what the status is, so we weren't able to do that at all.
Will you still try to do something for them this year, though?
Yeah, we're going to try to do dinners in each company.
Okay.
And, and kind of let them, you know, we were hoping that maybe we would have an outdoor event, but that's looking to be. A little dicey, so if we leave the, if we leave my officers at each firehouse to gather with their members. And, and a family member, then they can certainly do that and probably numbers that will be part, you know, or. At least obey by the manatories right now, rather than getting a department together with a hundred people, we certainly can't do that. And waiting till we, we would lose the opportunity this year if we waited. Anytime past June, so we're still trying to put the particulars together, we're going to do our best to do something, we're not just sure really how that's going to work out.
Okay. Hi Susan, I see you are back on. Do you want me to just walk through the items and you will chime in when I know we're going to need you to chime in?
You're doing a great job, Ralph.
Okay, moving to page forty-seven, Fire Marshal. Anything on this page? I will take its note, okay. Page forty-nine is Emergency Dispatch. That's our service contract, I don't think there's much we can do with that one, that's a contractual thing. Okay, any comments? Okay. So we moved to page fifty-one, which is the Police Department. Anything on this page? Not looking like any, any comments?
No, I don't have any of this.
Okay. We will move to page fifty-three, Emergency Management, which had a zero increase. Any comments on this page? Changes? Okay. Page fifty-five, Building Department. They had a two point nine one percent increase in expenditures planned. Anyone have any comments, thoughts, changes?
Looks like it's just payroll, right?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay. We go to page fifty-seven, Bob switches his hat and we go to Public Works Director now. Is there any things to bring up on this page?
I'm okay with it.
I know it's good. Okay. Page fifty-nine is Highway Department. They had a one point two two percent planned increase in expenditures.
I have a question, Ralph, I guess it's probably for Bob. What's, can you explain your service contracts? See, that number popped up, and what, what, what type of service contracts do you have?
Yeah, there's, there's a few in there, we do take some of our HVAC out of that account for contracts. There is vegetation that we increased. As, as, as you know, that we are trying to move in the direction, we, we did all our own vegetation control before. But things have changed related to the requirements by the state of Connecticut, so we need to get out of that business. It's too expensive to kind of be in for licensing, so we're looking to use an approved product, we worked very closely with our state. The vendors that won the state bid and are handling all the vegetation control for the state. And we're looking at safer products, products that don't. Include any of those chemicals that are hazardous to not only people, but our wildlife and our, and our waterways. And we've come up with a good program, so we put some money in there this year to start that program. And that vegetation control not only consists of in the areas of our sightlines along our guardrails, which we can't safely. Weed whack and do manual labor with because of the stone and stuff that's there, it's too dangerous on the employees, so we've always done. Spraying once a year to help mitigate those areas which make it much safer for the motorists, we do manually. The areas that we can and we take care of those with our roadside mowing as well as, you know, manual labor as far as weed whacking, but these are areas that we. We prep for chip sealing and make sure that the vegetation is, is killed properly on the edges of the road for chip sealing. And we added some in this year because it's a good program and we got an awful lot of letters and I know Susan has a pile of those as well. With very concerned citizens that wanted us to move in that direction, last year we had moved in the direction. And I think this year we did that on our own with experimenting with some vinegar and mixes and things. But this year, as well as many other towns throughout the state are moving towards that approved vendor who is working with the state in deep. And in relation to those safer chemicals, so our plan is to do that and that's why you see the increase in there under service contracts.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like to verify, so I know there's been some personal change, personnel changes, so this budget reflects any of those changes, correct?
Yes, that would be correct, that would be, there is an expected, it was not budgeted at the higher level, it was. Obviously the changes are unknown in totality, but we did not raise it to the level, you know, you kind of. See that in the, in the numbers there, it was not raised at, at, at the high of the level.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments, questions, changes for Highway? Okay. We move on to Vehicle Maintenance on page sixty-one. Small, small planned decrease in the expenses. Is there any other items on this page to bring up?
Just to, it's that, this is a very difficult budget. In all of my budgets. Because of controlling, you know, our aging fleet, as you can see. It's very difficult under that equipment repair line item and we're trying to make some improvements as you've already approved. On the police side, we've spent an awful lot of money this year repairing some of those older vehicles that the police. Are driving now and hopefully will be in a better state next year with some newer vehicles. But that's not, that's not all, I mean, I have probably over twelve pieces of equipment, including vehicles, maybe eight of those that are well over twenty years, twenty-five. We have the dump truck that will be replaced, that's coming up on twenty-nine years old, so, you know, all these. Newer vehicles that we get into that we request through capital really help us in this budget as well, so. You know, we're investing to save and this year, you know, vehicle maintenance took a pretty big hit, we, we had. Very large expenditures to our roll-off truck, which has a hundred and ninety thousand miles on it, which runs four days a week from the transfer station. We just had a failure where we had to rent, or we had to have someone haul for a week for us while we were getting our vehicle fixed, which is another cost. So these are some of the things that are going to be down the road that we need to look at and those are not cheap, that's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar vehicle. You know, and based on its age, it's got a lot of wear and tear on it, so we're going to be looking down the future. You know, at some big expenses, our excavator is forty-one years old, it basically only works at the transfer station now. It cannot be, the braking system cannot be replaced because of its age. So we would have to rent a very, if we needed a very large excavator for any emergency and or roadwork that we needed to do or drainage work. We would have to rent that because that vehicle is really not roadworthy and we use it to really pile brush at the transfer station. I'm not sure, but, you know, we're talking about maybe selling it if it's worth it now while it still runs versus worth nothing later, but we do use it. To assist us down there with that brush pile, it runs probably every week to do that. So vehicle maintenance is a tough one, you know, we can put a ton of money in there, but it doesn't work with the budget, so we try to. I work closely with Tom to try to come up with a, a pretty good median on where we think we're going to be and we hope with the. You know, with, with the new vehicles coming in that we can save a little more on repairs, the rest of the budget's, you know, pretty standard, it's just that one line item, which is your largest line item. Under repairs that, we do have a lot of.
Thanks. Anyone have any comments on this page?
Personnel wise, we have, do we have a retirement and is that, is the way the budget structured, is that basically got the. From a payroll perspective, taking that into account, basically we sat?
Yeah, that's why you're seeing that there's no change in that.
Okay. All right, we will move on, we move on to Town Engineer, page sixty-three. At a four point six four percent increase. Mainly in, it looks to be in inspection and review. Any comments on this page? So Bob, I have a question for you, given the situation we're dealing with right now, do you anticipate that? Some of the work that we had hoped to do may be in trouble because I know you're restricted right now in terms of how you use your personnel on. Construction sites.
As far as engineering?
Yeah.
So Public Works Engineering line items were a few in that budget and we're in good shape on those because we're doing a lot of that in-house and we're doing some of the inspections and work between myself. And Public Works, every, almost every line item that we're using, that we need to use through the Building Department is over, so. Each year, and I spoke last year on the importance of trying to creep the engineering budget up to get closer to the actual numbers, you know, we. We're trying each year to put a little bit in, I'm working with Tom not to make such a big increase. And the increases that you see are really in those line items that we're still showing. A need. A need in your planning and zoning line item, in your subdivision inspection and review, in your site plan review. Right now you're slightly over budget in all those line items because the activity is there and today, you know, I was working with them. And there's an awful lot of applications coming in today, so there's going to be site reviews and planning and residential plan reviews and stuff, so. They're going to still chip away at that budget, although it's looking good now, we've saved the money on the Public Works side, which is good, which is good.
Thanks. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on to page sixty-five, which is Street Lighting. Which we had a big twelve and a half percent decrease on anticipated expenses. I think we won't have any comments here, but anyone have any questions or thoughts on this one?
Just. Ralph, did it go down because we relamped or is it because our actual cost of electricity went down? Or are we using more renewable energy or, I'm just curious how we got such a nice profit there?
We changed some of the lights over to LED, Susan worked with Eversource. And they changed over some of those. Many, many of the lights and that was where the savings came in, we. We, we are, we were on a lock and are on a lock agreement on energy, but that does come up in December. So I'm not sure yet how the negotiation will go. Right now, we've had a lock agreement constellation for about four or five years. It's been pretty good. This is, there has been the reduction from the LEDs being there. So we're, we're, you know, we obviously saw some changes there. That's why we reduced the budget by 12%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we move to page 67, which is grounds, grounds maintenance, which was about a 6.28% increase. Any questions on this page?
This is Lou Pear calling or speaking. I had a question about the supplies. I know that the supplies in 2017 were around 30,000, and then it went to 35 in 2018. And those were actual expenditures. And then I see that we upped it with the anticipation, I think, of the park to 43.5 for this year, for this current year, 2019 to 2020. But now we're upping it to 47.5. And I'm just wondering if, in fact, park may not be fully operable this summer. There's a possibility that, in fact, the, the parks that were the areas where there's soccer fields and baseball fields that we are now maintaining, we won't be maintaining once we just maintain our park. So that's pretty much a wash, I think. Not sure. So I'm just saying that it seems like, is there something we can do about reducing that cost?
So the estimate last year was half of what we thought we would need. And we, we sat, Nate and I sat, and I'm sure Carl was involved prior to that, with trying to come up with a better figure on materials to see what we would actually need. And we reduced that to that number that you see about 47 from about 65,000. So we made some big improvements based on what they feel that they're going to do and how they're going to treat that grass. Here's the thing. You're right, Lou, but I don't know the obligation of the contractor to do any more to the grass other than mowing it. And the issue is, if we don't take the park over, we still have to maintain the, the grass itself and its, in its condition. And without doing the product in the sequence that it needs, I get concerned about losing that turf. So I mean, Nate can probably talk a little more in-depth about that, and I can certainly ask him. But I know that any fertilization program, especially the ones that we have to use on the field, are very critical as far as timing. You know, get to use those chemicals. So we use more of an organic base. And if you miss your steps, you start to lose your turf, especially new turf. So I guess the question would be, if we didn't take the park over this summer, and that was delayed, what would the contractor's responsibility be to feed that existing field to keep it where it should be before we accept it? Because that's an additional cost to him that he didn't have as part of his bid. So those costs that are in this budget for next year are to really take the park over and to really take care of the field this summer into the fall, and then especially in the spring where we do all our overseeding as we do for all our fields, and make sure that we start the season off properly.
So I will say that Nick, Nick and I recently, Reed and I recently were talking about things. And, and I know that the contractor that they had taken care of the grounds, I think at that point was, was doing some of the spring fertilization or whatever they were going to put down at that time. So now I know from everything seems to point to that everything's going to be completed this month on, on the facility. Hopefully, may even, maybe even Frontier will be completed. Maybe. Looking good, but so I don't know. You're right, we haven't had that conversation. I did broach the subject of what happens with any warranties here. Because obviously, our biggest challenge is we have a splash pad that may not get used this year. What does that mean in terms of warranty? So I think it's, it is time or closing on time, and we really have to have a serious conversation with them of how the transition will occur. And certainly, maintenance on, you know, maintaining that grass is going to be critical. And I know, obviously, we went to a lot of work. I know Carl worked with the, served the company that he's worked with at the high school and proven the soccer fields and everything. So, you know, they, they have a very good strategy, but it's the sound strategy that's going to, you know, you're going to have to make sure you follow it. And you do your due diligence. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. It is a question out there, when do you transfer the park? And obviously, when that transfer happens, it impacts what work the town has to do. So that is something we're going to have to start getting aggressive on discussion. So that number was intended to, when you, what was that, what was that intended that you were thinking you were picking up, picking up at the beginning of, the beginning of the summer? Is that what that was based on?
Yes. Yeah, full, full year budget based on summer, fall, and spring and summer, yep.
Which makes sense, right? I assume that Nick should be out of here, and that crew should be out of here by July 1st. So that makes sense.
Susan, you're on mute if you were trying to say something.
She's muted.
Kevin asked to unmute her.
I think she wants to be muted.
Kevin keeps muting me. I don't know why that's happening. It's not. I want to point out that only one employee is paid for by Board of Education. Three employees are paid by this budget for all the grounds, for schools and general. Am I muted again?
Nope. No.
Okay. I don't know why that's happening, but anyway. And we pay a stipend for the supervision by the Board of Education employee. So I think it's important to point out for people that maybe haven't been through this budget season before, is that this is a consolidated budget. And a lot of this money takes care of the school grounds as well as the town grounds. So while we're talking only about the Route 17 park, this is the entire high school campus as well as all the other campuses and all the general town government parks.
There is a line item in the Board of Ed 2 to, to offset some of the costs for product on their fields as well. I'm not sure, I don't have that number, but they do. There are some purchase orders that go through the Board of Ed for their, their specific fields on their, on their property.
Any other, so I mean, there are some discussions we have to have with Reed at construction to talk about. And we, Jim and I are going to try to hook up with Nick probably Thursday or Friday. So we could start asking the question of how, you know, how he wants to handle, what his dates are, and he's thinking. I mean, we're close. When I talked to him today, I talked to him, I thought about, you know, in the discussions we had, we talked about having maybe the graduation at the, at this facility. And I said, that's June 11th. And he said, I don't, I don't think that would be a problem. So, so I think he's thinking we're close. Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll move to page 69, which is town buildings maintenance, which had a 0.53 increase from expenditures planned. Anything here?
Just a quick question. What are the service contracts involved with the town building?
So the majority of the service contracts under the town buildings maintenance is the town hall and our buildings are HVAC, work related to our heating and cooling. Right. Which is a big number every year. And our pest control for all our buildings. Water. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that page? Okay, moving on. Snow removal, page 71. And I'm going to guess there's going to be a question for Bob, but I'll, I'll, I'll see. Is there a question for, is there questions on this page or changes or what?
Bob, it's not a question. Did we save any money this year because it didn't snow much? Bob, this is Rick.
Yeah, we saved a little money, money on product. That's for sure. So the budget, the budget's going to look good?
Okay.
Okay. Now, Bob, given the, I know we still have to do the work at the salt shed. I'm assuming that there's probably not much of an opportunity to buy some materials early to prepare for next year, right? Because we can't put them in place for the salt shed work's done. Do we have a date on that? Or I know that's, I know you've been working on that to get that through the process, so.
Yeah, it's been a battle. The bid went out yesterday. So that's a win that we're able to, we hope, that we're able to stay where we are and do the work that we've worked hard with deep to prepare proposal and the engineering of the structure to help protect our aquifer. Hopefully, the bids will come in good, and we can use the steep grant that's been awarded to us and finalize the project this year and put that to bed and have a, a better utilized structure. With that said, Portland, probably the only town that didn't take advantage of great prices on salt and the fact that they needed to get rid of it, and they were offering just about anything to take the salt. We had nowhere to put it. Unfortunately, I had salt in the building that we had a store off-site, and we don't have any more room. Although I have a little room, hopefully, to be able to take the rest of the salt that we're basically contracted for to take, which is already encumbered. And so we're still going to see a, a good savings this year in the materials. As I've talked, since I started here, the overtime budget has always been under-budgeted. And we were lucky this year to just be under that number. And that shows you that no matter how much snow falls, if anything falls on the roads, we're out there. We have to treat the roads, we have to make them ready for school, and it's a long duration, no matter what it is. If it's an inch of snow, if it's a half inch of ice, the guys are out because they need to be. And they're called in by not only the police, but as well as our schools. And we have to make those roads safe. So that's probably the most important part of our whole job, is actually maintaining roads. So with that said, you know, we were just under budget this year with a, with a very, you know, mild winter as far as I'm concerned. But we were out there because we did have precipice, and it caused issues in the hills that people might not see downtown. We had a lot of icing conditions that we were out handling and longer duration storms, with not a lot to shovel, but certainly frozen precip coming down. So that line item needs to be addressed each year. We didn't ask for much more, and we hope to hold our budget as best we can. But that's going to be a floating number. That's difficult. You'll see over the past five years, you spent $80,000, $85,000 on overtime. This year, we got away with, you know, under probably about $44,000. So we did really well. We kept it under our budget, and we saved money on materials as well. So this was a good year. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to take advantage of bringing any more materials in that will help us in the future. But I'll do my best to do what I can until our salt shed is up and able to take stock.
Thank you.
Bob, I had a question on the salt as well. Right now, there seems to be about $34,000 left available to buy salt for this year. Is it possible that, and maybe Tom can chime in as well. Is it possible that we can pre-purchase salt for next year using that $34,000, which would help reduce our budget overall? And that's our goal for tonight. And if you can't give me an answer right now, just, you know, we can take a look at some other time.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't buy more than you can take. So we, we need to take probably another $17,000 or $18,000 that we're going to, you know, try to take. And we will probably be able to store it for. But we can't, you know, we can't really buy something we can't take. If we had more, if we, you know, if the repairs had been completed and things were great, we could do things of that nature. But that being said, if we also, you know, if revenues stay strong in the current year, we're still trying to get, you know, revenues needed, you know, to come in as well. So we're mitigating and trying to do our best to save money on expenses in the current year from the town side to cover, you know, the Board of Ed has their ability to spin their whole outback. And, and then shortfalls in the town planning fees that haven't come in, the $50,000 or $60,000 that we will probably not get from brownstone for the summer. So, you know, we're playing all those games of trying to answer. So I, I mean, the main question, the main issue right now is the salt shed's not completed. And the bids go out, they will hit the paper tomorrow. And we hope they'll come in strong and people can get work completed. But it would probably be very unlikely that it would be, you know, finished by June 30, to where we could take, you know, more. And if, if we could, I'm sure we would attempt to do that.
Yeah, our capacity, Lou, is only so much for the building. We, we certainly will not spend that. I won't have capacity to spend all of that money, even if I was able to do that in June. Certainly not. So you're, you know, you're looking at probably a 25% savings in that budget this year, which I think is really good, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. And we move on to page 73, and that is the planning department. I guess the question I would have is, and for the recent changes that have occurred within that department, are we leaving the budget where it is because we anticipate how we're going to build out the group? Or is there any changes that would apply to this planning department for what has changed?
It's pretty early in terms of the knowledge that Ashley left. So her position is vacant, but I anticipate additional hours for the zoning enforcement officer as well as additional hours for the, for the development planner as well. So there might be some room there. One of the problems we have is to have three people in the space with the COVID-19. We can't do it. You can only have two people in that space at any given time. So I have not filled that position, the land use administrator position. But we just offered the zoning enforcement officer position to an individual who appears to be highly qualified. And that individual may be able to do more hours. And Mary's position will likely do more hours as well. So I think there's some room there. I can't quantify it tonight, but we could take a look at it, Ralph.
Okay. Yeah, I figured that, I just wanted to make sure.
Right. I couldn't hear you, Tom. Could you repeat it?
Just from a budget perspective, if we just, you know, if we decide to add a person that's currently in the part-time position and they go into a full-time, you know, it just would be more or less, if in fiscal '21, we would just wind up charging them to regular payroll, that would go over budget and then part-time payroll would go under if that became a full-time endeavor. If it's a part-time situation, then it would just be a part-time situation. So it's hard right now, like Susan said, to modify the budget because I don't believe that, you know, from our standpoint, we don't know necessarily how that's gonna get filled in totality. But, you know, so those two line items that kind of be a combined line items is what you're, is what you're trying to do there to achieve it. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we move on to the next one, which is the zoning enforcement department, which we obviously just talked about. There was no increased plans, we obviously have someone that's been, offer's been extended, I guess, but. So I'm assuming, does this mean no change for the time being then to this page relative to the new person?
True, true. We did have a conversation with Dan Bertram this week and he's anticipating bringing his application soon. He's working with his finance folks, so that's another sort of fluid thing. When, when Bob was talking a little bit about the town engineer, when you have more development, there's more expenditures. We try to hit the middle ground in terms of development, but there will be hopefully the revenue that comes along with the development costs as well. So that's what we're anticipating, we're anticipating a lot more activity for this 2021.
Any other questions on zoning? Okay. We move on to page seventy-seven, planning and zoning commission. This had a decrease, anticipated increase of point two-one percent, anyone have any comments on this page? Okay, no comments, we'll move to the next page, page seventy-nine, zoning board of appeals. There was no increase anticipated, but this comments. No comments, we'll move on to page eighty-one, inland wetlands commission, no change in expenditures here, any comments? Okay. Page eighty-three, so we're on the commission run here, so page eighty-three, conservation commission. There was an increase on this one, but given it's a commission, it's not, we're not talking large dollars. Any comments on conservation commission? Okay. Page eighty-five, economic development commission, they had a large increase mainly to cover their marketing program or what they were trying to do in terms of signage. So that was the increase that they, main part of their increase for the new budget. Does anyone have any comments with regards to the EDC?
Can somebody explain the signage, the marketing program?
I know they were talking about some signs out in some of the areas to really highlight where building locations were. I thought, I thought that that was part of the signage that they were talking about. I know, Rick, we've been on those calls, I remember them talking about putting some signs out in the areas just to let people know where they could find some of these businesses. I don't know if that encompasses all they were talking about in signage, Sue, do you remember, Susan, you remember any other?
I know they need some updating in the industrial park area and I know that the parking signs that are on Main Street are in pretty sorry shape. Those are, those have been hit a couple times, I don't know, I think those should be replaced. Total increase is about twelve hundred dollars, so not a lot of money, but it is an increase.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think they also talked a little bit about, I don't know if someone mentioned this already, the farming. You know, we had that farm summit, they were thinking about maybe having some additional signs that would help folks find some of the stands that are more in the middle of the town in terms of farm, farms, we talked about that too.
Okay, doesn't seem to be any additional comments, so we'll move on to capital expenditure, page eighty-seven, it's strictly the board clerk, there was no increase, any comments? Okay, health department, again, it's the Chatham Health District, this is just what we're contracted for, right, Susan? So there, there's no change to this.
Although, this year they are making up for some losses, actually with some budgeting errors last year that they made corrections to in this budget. And I didn't point it out earlier, but you may have noticed the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, on occasion, these contractual obligations go up. That went down this year and the health department goes up this year, so hopefully things will level off. But given the COVID-19, I know they're experiencing a lot more activity within the health district. So hopefully a lot of that will be covered by grants and other reimbursement programs from the state and federal governments.
Page ninety-one's environmental health, there is no expenditures. Page, page ninety-three, this is social services, so this is where we are providing some funding to some of the activities that happen within the town. So I'm gonna assume there may be some comments on this page, so who would like to start off?
Well, I think the board has to every year look at whether or not they want to contribute to some of these social services. Many of these agencies from throughout the region do provide us with services for Portland residents. Certainly the Community Health Center in Middletown, its five hundred dollar donation doesn't begin to cover the cost that they have. The Midstate Substance Abuse Action Council, it's a donation essentially to a program that happens at Middlesex Chamber of Commerce, the Regional Mental Health Board is just that, the Rushford Center, again, they provide some drug alcohol and other counseling activities to residents, it's a very small contribution of five hundred five, excuse me, five hundred dollars. The Red Cross Dial-A-Ride and the Rural Transit Program, we have not become members of the Midstate Transit. I have gone slowly with that to see how things proceed. Some of the other smaller towns such as Durham, Middlefield, I believe, have become members. We are not members, so these are fees that we pay for the Dial-A-Ride program contribution and also the actual bus program. I would not recommend changing any of those, the Sexual Assault Crisis Center, Family Access, our contributions, Brownstone Quorum, we've in the past given them five hundred dollars, it's there again this year. Whether or not we need to contribute that, it's up to the board. Emergency Shelter, we haven't had too much call for that. One of the things that we're doing, as you know, it's not so much emergency shelter as it is homelessness prevention. We've applied for a grant that will assist us and will contribute back to the community. So I think that's a very helpful situation. So together, the two thousand and then the twenty-two hundred goes to the connection for their emergency shelter that they do provide for homeless people. Memorial Day Parade is here, it's nominable, nominal expenses, is that my feedback? That you're, do you hear feedback? Or no, you okay?
Sometimes, but not only that.
It's a little squeak-squelching, but.
I didn't know if that was me or not, so I'll try not to cause that. So the Memorial Day Parade, we will not have a parade this year and it remains to be seen whether we will next year. The Veterans Activities, they have not had a tremendous use of that this year. Fireworks will not happen this July and I would not anticipate them the next year. The fundraising committee has determined that there's not sufficient interest, so they are not proposing that they fundraise for that unless there's more forthcoming from some of our businesses and individuals who want that. Historical Society, and of course, we don't know about the Portland Fair for this upcoming year. I know the Durham Fair and the Berlin Fair have been canceled for season 2020. I don't think our fair association has made a determination. So from that, the only one that I would recommend removal would be the fireworks at this point. But it's really up to this board as to whether you choose to fund these. The total amount is sixty-three thousand, of that about forty-one thousand or so is the transit program. So you're talking maybe twenty thousand dollars of donations.
Oh, Susan, if, this is Rick, if there's no Memorial Day Parade, will any of that Memorial Day allotment or parade money still be spent?
There may be, I think they buy a week and they bought, they bought flags. The flags, I think, come out of the Veterans Commission, Veterans Activities. We buy flags and place them at all the cemeteries in Portland. But to answer your question, we will not spend all of the five thousand dollars on the parade this year, I don't know what's gonna happen next year. We'll spend.
So if there's money left over this year, does it just go in our general fund or?
Balance or it goes to offset some of the loss in revenues and other expenditures that may go over. I mean, I think in general, our expenditures are within reason this year. I don't think there's too many areas that we are experiencing overages. It's the revenue depletion or the revenue that has gone down and that, that is the difficulty. So we're trying to balance that with spending less and not, you know, seeing that that, that would balance it out.
Yeah, when I, when I look at these, I look at, you know, the fireworks, I think that's, that's the one, if we're not gonna be doing the fireworks, that's an easy one, I think, to look at. The Quorum, I know that money usually goes towards the concert series. This year with COVID, the concert series is in doubt. The concert series has typically been five concerts, it's planned for four this year. It starts a week later, so if it does happen, still gonna be a four, four concert series versus five, which certainly saves that five hundred dollars, which means that for this year with everything going on, we could pull that out this year. And that's not gonna impact the concert series if we're even able to have it. Historical Society, I'm not sure if they have any programming that they use that five hundred for and what the impact for them would be. And I guess the question would be on the, on the fair, do we know when the fair's gonna meet, if they, any kind of a decision? I mean, it seems like all the other fairs leading up to it are being canceled. I don't anticipate that we're gonna have gathering restrictions, you know, by, by the beginning of October. It'd be nice, but I'm gathering, you know, I guess we probably won't. But do we have any sense of whether or not they're leaning one way or the other or when they're gonna meet to discuss?
I have not heard anything, other than I don't, they have not made a decision. Do you hear anything, Bob? Have you heard anything different?
No.
Yeah, I ran into Danielle at the park and she said, yeah, they had not met to make, make a decision, so.
I was just gonna say, Ralph and Susan, Rick and I have a phone conference at eight-thirty for House District Thirty-two, a meeting, so I have to bail out here in about a minute or so.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you know.
If you just wanna take a, maybe a, I don't know if anybody needs a recess, but it would, if you just maybe mute yourselves and then come back on when, when you're done, I don't know.
Okay. It shouldn't take that long, I can't imagine.
Yeah.
Right.
I was at the State Senate Convention, that's why I was late, about thirty minutes.
Okay, good, as soon as it's done, I'll come on back.
Okay, thank you. I do wanna thank the fireworks committee again and again and again for all the work they've done over the past several, several years. A really a very fun committee and they've done a marvelous job in running the fireworks. It's unfortunate that we're not able to raise the money, but they've also raised, as you know, for other charities and I think that committee continues to work hard to serve our community and I wanna give them a compliment. So thank you, Portland Fireworks Committee.
Okay. We could then move on to page ninety-five and page ninety-five is the senior center, Waverly Center expenses. I guess the question I would say is, Susan, do we anticipate that there were, there's gonna be savings for this year, but obviously it doesn't have to do with next year, it has to do with this year.
Savings in what regard?
Because they haven't really been running, I mean, for services that they're running, we haven't really run some of the, you know, some of these extraneous costs like, you know, supplies and, you know, things like that. Maybe we've seen a slight downtick, obviously, but that's this year.
Right.
Know what's gonna happen come next year, you know.
Right, right. And they've been doing more activities within the department and I would like to see that continue. One of the things they've also been working on is having more meals and as they were starting to plan for that is when COVID-19 hit and they were looking at doing monthly meals where some of the cost is defrayed by the participants, but it's nice to be able to offer some help in that regard. They're also looking, as you can see in the fiscal notes, to having an electronic sign-in program. Most senior centers have that, so they can keep a tab on how many people participate in the various programs and that they find very helpful. The building gets a tremendous amount of use, not by the senior population only. As you know, we have some of our meetings there, Brownstone Quorum has meetings there, the political parties meet there, the Green Party, the Democrats, sometimes Republicans meet there, the Bartlett Hill community has their meetings there, their annual meetings, it is a heavily used building. So some of the costs associated with the electricity, the water sewer, the fuel, that's associated with more of a community center than just the senior center. So that's why we've been working every year toward getting some more program services and instructor fees to actually run programs for the center. I'm also working with Nate Foley and terms of trying to get more parks and recreation type activities in a convergence and working together. They, there's a lot of synergy there and they're, again, just beginning to do it and then this whole thing started up. So we wanna pick up where we left off on that. A lot of physical exercise as well as social and emotional improvements and personal development programs. They're also looking to improve the kitchen and they fundraised on their own. They fundraised, I think, over thirty thousand dollars that they have and they have not utilized. I don't recommend that's in that department. The Municipal Agent for the Elderly, in terms of the usage, we have a lot of people that use the transportation that's provided and that twenty-five thousand dollars for the van driver stipends and the gas and diesel fuel is very much needed and some of that cost is offset by donations from the people that actually take the rides. We're hoping in the short future to start up again. A lot of medical appointments are achieved by using this service and it's very much appreciated by our. A lot of medical appointments are, are achieved by using this service and it's very much appreciated by our residents. I don't recommend.
The only question I would have is on the stipends for the drivers. I mean, I certainly, as long as we're full bore going the way we are, that we shouldn't decrease from this. I'm just wondering if we're anticipating, we might have at least two months here where we're not gonna have any usage and if that impacts whether we have something put aside for any stipends for drivers. Cause I can't imagine, I can't ima, I'm, I'm hard pressed to believe in the months of July and August, there's gonna be a lot of wholesale driving of seniors around. I, I don't know. I guess.
Medical appointments are starting up again and I'm gonna have Mary Pont, our director, comment on that. Mary?
Hi. One of the things, as Susan had pointed out, was that the numbers of rides that we have been giving has increased. I, I can't even tell you how high the numbers have increased this year. Granted, it all came to a stop when we, everything was shut down. But at the time when it shut down, we were on the verge, and I think Tom can certainly vouch for this, we were blowing past the budget of what we had already allotted for our drivers. We have free vehicles twice a month. We have two vehicles, once, so we have one that we share and two that we have all the time. And they are on the road continually with the drivers that we have. So the need is huge in the town of Portland. We've got an awful lot of people that unfortunately are going and have had a hard time right now because the, the appointments have been canceled, but they have been going for infusions. We've got some going through cancer treatments that are going once or twice a week and these are some of our seniors. So the need is there, that money, and I had actually put more than that into the budget for the drivers because we were definitely going to reach what we had already had set in last year's budget of the twenty-three thousand. So I don't, I guess I'm gonna say, please don't touch it right now because I'm, I think, once we get started driving again, we're going to continually to have an increase with the amount of people that we're taking. And these are medical rides. We do have a couple times a month where we take people on activities, but most of it is medical rides. So we're looking at right now with picking up where we left off and not sure when that's gonna happen. One of the things that has to happen is we're gonna have to make some changes to the van and Bob and I have been talking about that, that the vans are gonna have to be set up and with some different gear in them to protect not just the, the people that we're transporting, but our drivers especially. So to touch the, any finance going into this fiscal year and think we've got some leftover from this past year, it's not there in this, in this municipal agent account.
I wanna point out too, that not all of this comes from local tax dollars. Mary is very diligent about applying for a regional grant that provides some funding to offset this cost. So this is not totally from taxpayer money. And when you look at twenty-eight thousand nine hundred in a thirty-four million dollar budget, it's a small, small amount to help our seniors get to their doctor appointments.
Hello, can I interject, please? As Tom Robinson, so a few things, we haven't, you know, as Mary stated, there's been a few times now that they haven't been driving for a while. And as of, we already had spent twenty-four thousand and ninety-one dollars prior to when they stopped working. So you probably were looking to be a thirty thousand dollar number if, if we had kept going. And we had reported kind of on such as that. Also, with that grant program, we're required to maintain effort. So in, in this matter here, we're going up slightly by three hundred dollars. We're in the total budget, you know, we're maintaining our effort. So we really, you know, from a, from a perspective of the grant, we, we can't really, we can't cut it. And if you were to do it the whole year, the likelihood is that you, you know, you'd be reaching the thirty thousand. So even if you didn't do stuff for two months, you're probably gonna hit that twenty-five thousand because we were already at twenty-four thousand ninety-one as of right now.
One of the things that the state has said in all the reporting we do, we report on mileage, which is very important, as well as how many rides we give. So we have two different directions that those reports are given. And due to the fact we have not been driving, our vehicles are sitting, there's no mileage. And they have already let us know that, don't worry about that, that we know there's no mileage going on the vehicles and in those reports, that's a very important piece because obviously you have to show the need. And we show the need by showing how many miles we drive, how many hours our drivers are on the road. So knowing that March eleventh or whatever that deadly date was, we shut everything down and now until when, we're not sure when we're opening up, there are no hours, no drivers, no miles. So when that picks up again, I expect we're gonna be probably right back to where we were before, we're hoping anyways. That's what we all hope.
Okay. Yeah, I was just saying, because, you know, obviously we have inactivity, but if you were already blown by that number, then, then I guess the track is towards a, not probably hitting, probably blown by this number too.
I was hopping around, Ralph. I was saying, we're getting close. We're getting close.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments about this, this one? Okay, I guess we're leaving it as is. We'll move on and the next one is the Portland Library on page ninety-nine. Do we have comments with regards to the library? Comments, comments? Okay, doesn't seem like we have any comments for the time being on the library or changes. Okay, page one oh one is employee fringe benefits. I'm gonna assume these are all type of contractual expenses, so. I'm anticipating we don't have very much movement on these items. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. We'll move on to page one oh three, Risk Management. That is our insurance, right? So that's another number in terms of anticipated cost for insurance. That's going up one point two, three percent anticipated for the new budget. Is there any comments about that? Again, I would assume, I know we've made recent changes, make sure we're covered adequately, so. Comments? Okay. We'll move on to debt service on page one oh five. I would assume this is another one that, Tom, you have everything laid out as anticipated with our debt. There's no updates from what you know at this point, right?
No, those are all per the, and the amortization schedules. So those should be the amount that we will be seeing.
Yeah, so every, that's locked numbers. There are no numbers that have variability to them, right?
Yeah, the miscellaneous, we always leave a little bit for rounding for issues, but that, other than that, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to page one oh seven, which is inter-fund transfers. Now, these change if we change the other ones, right? We don't make any changes here. We made change in individual departments, which would then impact these particular ones, right? So we don't.
And overall, there is a reduction in this particular.
Yep.
Page. It's a reduction of five point seven two percent. There was a payment that was made for the school's debt. It was, wasn't it the bond anticipation note that was paid, Tom?
Yes.
So that has been retired, so that line item nine zero 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 six is a reduction. So that's good news. And depending on what we do with capital for the town and capital for Board of Ed, respectively, a hundred fifty-six thousand for the town, a hundred and thirty-five thousand for Board of Ed. Some of that on the town section is LoSiP, which is a grant from the state. So depending on what we choose to do, we'll determine this number on this page.
Okay. Okay, will that be a discussion further ahead?
Right.
Okay, we move on, we, well, I guess inter-fund transfers out, same thing. That has our contingency. So is, this is the only place contingency appears, correct? So if we were changing contingency, we'd change it here. We're not, we're not, that was the plan. This is the only location. Okay. All right, so now we move on to some of the other departments.
Animal control, your next one.
Yeah.
Page one twenty and let's see, one nineteen.
Yep, because water and sewer are locked in, so. Page one twenty, animal control.
I have told some selectmen, I don't know if I've had conversation with all other six of, of our selectmen, but within the animal control department, Middletown has notified us that they will be likely severing the agreement with our towns, which means the loss of about forty thousand dollars in revenue. They pay for up to seven paddocks a month. So they're indicating they will remain at least for the first quarter and we'll have to determine the level of service that we will have within this department going forward from there. They have not given me a formal letter yet. But it's a sizable amount of revenue and it's in, let's see, property rental, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars would come from the city of Middletown because we have an agreement with them. What we'll be doing is reaching out to other towns. We have a grandfathered shelter, which means while we don't meet the current code, it does meet the state's requirements for the sheltering of animals, particularly dogs and cats. So we'll be working on recruiting another town to join us or another type of dog servicing facility. I'll keep you up to date on that, but you will see some changes going forward.
Susan, this is Mike. Was it because they didn't need all seven bays? Are they doing something different themselves or what was the reason?
They are in the process of, of agreeing with Piper Olsen Facility, I think it's Berlin Road. And they will be moving there. They're going to have their own shelter.
Got it.
Okay, so changes to come, just not yet. Okay. So let's see, now it gets a little more harder for me to follow. So we, control one twenty, that's revenue.
One twenty-four is that probably.
One twenty-four, youth services.
Were you gonna talk about animal control expenses or, I mean, it is what it is, right? Is everybody happy with that?
Oh, yeah.
That would be one twenty, one twenty is where the expenses are. The actual, the, the individual is the regular employee. There's some part-time employees that come in to work weekends or other times and that individual is not available. There's their insurance, there's benefits of that main member service contracts or generally, there's some feedback and it's other items like disposition of dogs, dead animals and such. There's meetings, there are conferences and dues that are required to do. There's veterinary fees when, when the animals are ill. Care and repairs and then, and then the utilities, obviously, there's just utilities as such. Commodities are more or less just the, just those that are required. And the fee for services that are required to pay back to state and then workers' comp is their transfer to workers' comp. There's really not a lot of, there's not a lot of space there right now as, as is, as, as how it is staffed.
Well, most likely there are more numbers that would be impacted if Middletown pulls out because we won't have to do so many items. Not that they're great numbers that are gonna change, but they will change slightly nonetheless.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't have any comments. Anyone else have comments on the expenditures for? Okay, so we'll move to the expenditures for youth services, which is one twenty-five, right?
One twenty-four is the revenue, if you want to look at revenue.
Okay, so these, it makes sense to look at, okay, so we're on Youth Services Department on the revenue page on one twenty-four. So I guess we'd say, do we anticipate any? We have, just like we will have a park and rec, we have program fees and there's a little bit of uncertainty of what that all means.
Yeah, man, program fees right now are just so hard to judge. You generally have related program expense, so you hope those kind of, when that, if you don't have the revenue, hopefully the expense will net off. The youth, the, the DSS money, the, 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 the actual main grant that should come in as such, we hope. And then the DSS is more or less the counseling that goes on from the family council center. And then the program fees are obviously the program run. So it's, it's very reliant upon participants being in school, children being in school. And so, you know, it's, it's really hard to judge that right now. But this is, you know, it's a reasonable allocation if, if, you know, life goes to where, where it once was.
Anyone have any thoughts on this page?
You gotta wing it, kind of.
Yeah. My gut says that when it does start up, that we're gonna need more youth services, but because I think we're heading to a bad, bad condition in a lot of things, so, but.
Ralph, could I just go back to animal control again?
Sure. Where, where you wanna go?
Well, I, I'm looking at the expenditure, it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand. If we were to not have an animal control officer or if we were to have a part-time person and we didn't have any animals in the shelter, could there be a savings there for, you know, maybe thirty, forty percent of that cost? Question for Tom.
You question for me?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, you know, animal control again and.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, how do I know that? I just, you know, kind of found out about how, you know, that they're, that maybe they're not gonna be there and maybe they're gonna be there. I think you gotta, I think you gotta give time to investigate what, you know, are we gonna get another customer? Hopefully we can replace the revenue. Otherwise, I mean, I think, you know, that unfortunately, I think, would be, you're talking about a layoff situation or some type of a reduction of a full-time employee that's currently there. So, you know, I don't, you know, yeah, and obviously if you lose. So, you know, I don't, you know, yeah, and obviously, if you lose that revenue and you can't replace it, there's probably some situation that's going to transpire. But I don't know, I mean, I think the first lucky woman would have to take care of that personnel matter before I could really understand what, you know, where we would, where we would go with any type of reduction as much.
So just to be clear, that if in fact that position was reduced or eliminated, there would be, all of those other items on those two pages that add up to a hundred and twenty one thousand, many of those would go away.
Well, the, the full-time employee is the, is the line one one oh oh one, which is the fifty four thousand.
Right.
Likely, the sick pay was her, the medical insurance, dental, life, but I mean, this person is, you know, is a contracted position. Hopefully, there's another resolution to this scenario where we're able to obtain more rental income from another municipality or other scenario. Otherwise, you know, there will be hard decisions to be made.
So the question I have beyond that is that if we don't have any dogs in the pound and we don't have a need for a animal control person, could we hire a per diem person when the need arises?
Well, you're, you're looking, Lou, at a loss from what they're telling me. As, as Tom mentioned, they did this to me about a week ago. I knew that it was coming. I don't mean to say that Middletown didn't let us know. I just didn't have a date. At first, the Middletown police captain said a month. And I said, we'd prefer a quarter, we pay by quarter. So I'm asking that you give us notice for the one quarter. So he hasn't firmed that up. If he firms that up, it means you're looking at a loss of revenue of thirty thousand dollars in this budget. Regardless of the seventy four thousand that you're transferring in, thirty thousand isn't going to be there likely. So that thirty thousand in expenditures, you'd have to find that revenue. Because we're not, if you don't reduce the budget by thirty thousand, you're reducing revenue by thirty. So it's incumbent on me to tell you that because that's a substantial change in this department. It's relatively new information.
Thank you.
You need to think about it, I think, is what I'm saying, Lou.
So more to come on that one, it sounds like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Town aide wrote us a grant. And hopefully, it comes in, page one twenty two. They always tell us, oh, it's coming, it's coming, oh, it's not coming, oh, it's coming, it's not, it's coming, came this year. And we'll see what they do for next year. You know, the real concern going forward is what the state of Connecticut is going to do in terms of their grants to cities and towns. And some of the quote-unquote grants, they're actually bonded money. Some of it's bonded, some of it's actual cash that comes out of the state money. And whether or not they're able to meet their commitments for fiscal year twenty one is still uncertain. And that's why you see a lot of our sister and brother towns not increasing expenditures because they don't know that those revenues are coming. So again, I have to tell you what I know, and that's what I'm hearing. I think that's no secret. If you read the paper or you listen to the news, there are concerns about revenues for next year.
Okay. So how's it work here? So now we have youth services, we were looking at their revenue. We talked about that. We moved on and we were on youth services expenditures, right? That's where we were.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there any comments on this? Again, it's.
This is a shared department, remember, Mary works both for youth and senior services. There's already been economies of scale that have been implemented in these areas. We share a person for the two departments. And then there's a full-time person in the senior center. And there is a contracted person that we, Mary has been very successful in getting grants. United Way has been very generous to us, as has the state of Connecticut. We were able to have a lot of additional work within the, the youth services department. Ally Banky is the name of our consultant, and she works quite a bit with the schools. She spends a lot of time and energy with the schools as well as with the preschool programming within our community. She does fabulous job. Mary does a fabulous job as well. And we also have a counseling service that supplements. It's either on page one twenty six. You contribute, what's your transfer in on this one? Eighty six, three fifty two.
Any other comments on youth services?
The temporary payroll, is that like for our, like our summer programs?
Or is that? After-school programming?
Or after-school programming?
Mary, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, Rick, that's, that's for our after-school program. So as you saw on the, the previous page where we were talking about the, the revenue. So the revenue basically offsets that, the cost of the temporary payroll. And that's the after-school program, which is five days a week. And starts, well, I'm, I like to say this year is going to start the first day of school, but I'm not sure when that first day of school is going to be. But it starts the first day of school and goes all the way through. So we'll say ten months until the last day of school. It is not a summer program. It's a ten-month program about. So that's the staff for that program, offset by the fees that are charged for the program.
And where is that on the revenue page? What line item?
Program fees, school year, zero, zero.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Three six four, program, program fees.
Okay. Got it, that's the ninety seven thousand, five hundred.
Right. And I'm not sure that we're going to hit that eighty six for this year, only because we were short, obviously, the month of April, a part of June, so eight, ten, twelve weeks, thirteen weeks of school. So we're probably not going to hit that eighty six. We're close. We're probably right now at, I'm going to say maybe around eighty three. There's still some that I'm expecting coming in. So hopefully, when it picks back up, we'll be back to full steam.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted also just to mention that in our counseling resource center, our counselor, as soon as everything changed with the coronavirus and we put out, Ally Banky had put together a resource list for the town, and we got that. It's on the town webpage. It was also given out through the school system. And that went out on the Monday, right after the school closed on that Friday. And that Tuesday, we had already got additional calls into the counseling center. So the counselor was able to, with what he does, go into, and I had Kevin running around finding the camera for him. He was able to go telemed with the counseling services. And assuring that in doing that, he was also still going to be able to charge for the insurances. Because a lot of the people that we see recharge those, the insurances. We do have many that are, you know, on a sliding scale or a minimum of what they can pay. So we were able to get that up and running, and he has been very successful at that.
Very good.
He's been with us nineteen years. I have to stop and think. Going on twenty years, coming up. And I keep saying, please don't leave me. Please don't leave me.
Thanks, Mary. Any other comments for youth services? No? Okay, thank you. We will move on to resource, resource recovery department. Obviously, we went through the process of making changes to the costs on some of the items for regards to the revenue. There's really a reason to visit, to review that side of the, of the page, but certainly, I guess I raised it, if anyone has any comments about the revenue side of resource recovery department. How about flipping to the other side on one twenty eight, where we have expenditures? Any questions or items there that want to be flagged?
Ralph, I had a note from previous that with the service contracts, I had made a note about brush removal, and I'm not sure, I'm wondering if Bob can just update us on, on that.
Well, I will tell you this, since many of our residents have been home, we, I am more troubled every day when I see the pile that has grown at our transfer station. I need to make it to July or August next year's budget to be able to chip that. And I'm, I'm concerned that I'm going to be able to do that and not run out of room. With that said, you're going to see probably the highest removal costs that you've ever seen for that job. I expect it to be anywhere between thirteen and fourteen thousand dollars, which is going to eat up the majority of that line item, which there's other costs that need to go into that line item. So I am concerned that starting right off in the beginning of next year, I'm going to be in a deficit position in that line item for service contracts. Now, the following year, you know, maybe we'll see some changes, you know, with that in the new program. Maybe we'll have less brush coming in because, you know, we are going to start to try to offset a very small percentage of that cost with the fee that we've established in July. But, I mean, there, people are taking full advantage of the fact that, you know, with their permit, they can come in and they're doing an awful lot of work out there, which, you know, there's a lot of yards that are looking very good. And people are taking advantage of cleaning up because they have the time that they might not have had before. But there's always a cost to that on our end. And like I said, it's an enormous pile that's there. And, you know, we're taking anywhere from forty to sixty loads of brush in a day during the week, which you usually never see much brush coming in during the week. Most of the time, it's Saturdays or late Fridays. So it's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, we're going to have to handle it. So that's a concern that I have.
Okay.
Here is also a brush pickup year.
Right, so you're right, Sue. Thank you for that. So people will have the opportunity to do even more next year at no cost, which we just implemented because they can just have us do it. You know, which is a good program, although it's labor-intensive, and it probably takes our guys, you know, three weeks to four weeks to make it through town, which is four to six guys with trucks and to load that brush from the curbside to the transfer station.
It is a great program, and it really, and it's also, it's not only helpful to our residents, makes the town look better, and it's also in terms of getting rid of that dry brush, getting it out of the yard. So our guys do a fabulous job with that program. But we used to burn it, and we ran into troubles with the DEEP. They cited us for the burn, and we had neighbors adjacent that have lung conditions, asthma and the like. And they asked that we refrain from the burning. So that's why this has increased over the years as well, because we don't burn anymore.
Okay, any other comments with regards to resource recovery? Okay, that moves us to the one thirty, which is the building maintenance fund. So that's just a transfer. There's a miscellaneous, well, no, there is no miscellaneous for the upcoming year. So just the transfer. And a transfer out on page one thirty one. I don't think this is, is there any, there's no comments on building maintenance, are there?
Oh, Ralph, this is a transfer out, but it's just, that's actually where the expenses are between the town and the board. So the town gets allocated forty one thousand, the Board of Ed gets allocated forty one thousand. It's a great program, you know, the town has instituted as, you know, many beats on both sides. Would be great if we could put more in, but the, the, just funding it as it is is very beneficial.
And then, remember, they asked us to transfer up to a hundred thousand dollars into their maintenance fund from their operating fund from the current year. So hopefully, that will occur in addition to this number.
Okay, so now we're on to the last department, which is park and rec. I'm one, the revenue is on page one thirty two. Expense is on one thirty three. I don't know what we want to talk about here. Obviously, I don't know, Nate, you're, I knew you were out there. If you're out there now, maybe you could speak to how the programs are moving and what you're offering and trying to make up for, make up for the losses that we're feeling because events are not happening.
Yeah, so right now, all the programs are pretty, we're trying to offer regular online activities for both youth and adult. And all of our numbers are suffering because everything's being hosted online. And with our minimum, you know, groupings and regulations like that, I think with kids especially sitting behind the computer through school already, the last thing they want to do is sit behind the screen for more athletic and, you know, leisure-related programs. So it's the same thing I've been hearing from a lot of the surrounding towns such as Glastonbury, East Hampton, Middletown, they're all suffering from those registration numbers. And we're trying to just keep pushing out different ideas and opportunities for people to participate in. And we're just not getting as much of a bite as we would hope. So by finding new options and working with our instructors, we're just keep trying to push out new options and hopefully get more people involved over the, the next few weeks, moving into summer. And at least right now, we are working with some of the school administrative team. And we have another meeting tomorrow to discuss camp options for the summer. So hopefully, we'll be able to make some sort of program work and make it work safely for both the kids and the staff, utilizing the school buildings as an option for us. But Office of Early Childhood is regularly releasing updates on how these camp programs can run, what kind of safety procedures are going to need to be set in place. And we're going to need to make sure we can follow all those with our younger staff and our supervisors at the camp program on site, really to make sure everything is, like I said, as safe as possible.
Unfortunately, the guidelines have been slow to come. I was out there today as well, looking around. I was trying to find out more about playgrounds and Googling playgrounds all over the country, and now they're opening them up. And no one puts any real meat behind anything that is put out there.
No, they haven't. It's a very slow process coming in, and there's no, like you said, no meat behind it. There's no really good answers of how these programs are going to run. Everybody's trying to really take ideas from one another. We're working directly with the Connecticut Rec and Parks Association. We're working directly with the Connecticut Rec and Parks Association, National Recreation and Parks Association. And I'm sitting in meeting after meeting, conference calls, and we're all just bouncing ideas back and forth with each other, hoping that we can find a solution that's going to work best for all of us.
Nate, have you had a chance to talk to a lot of the parents who are willing to do?
Can you say that again, Mike?
I was going to say, I know we're all trying to figure this out and I would not want to be doing your job now. But maybe one of the answers might be talking to the parents and see what they're willing to do. Because even though the state, they set guidelines for what could be done for camps, it's ultimately up to be, it's going to be up to parents what they feel comfortable with. But I don't know if you've included them on any of the conversations or meetings with some of the other folks that are making decisions on this, but that may be helpful, I don't know.
That's a good point, thank you. We were planning to actually send out a survey looking in to get responses on our Facebook page as well as send out some mass email distribution to all of our users on our rec desk website to try and get some sort of feedback of if parents would be interested and willing to send their kids to some sort of camp program. And a lot of towns that have introduced virtual camp programs for summer have really been shot down with it. Nobody wants to continue sitting behind that computer screen come summertime. So there's been a lot of negative feedback about those options. But I do think getting some feedback from the parents through surveying would definitely help.
But now, I know that a good amount of money came out of the summer programs in terms of baseball. You get these various groups coming to you to use fields. So at this point, have they approached you? Have you taken, have they signed up to want to use fields? Where does that stand?
So we have had some inquiries about field usage. However, with those group limitations still a five, we have not taken any money. We're basically, we have people somewhat locked in for field usage once fields become accessible again for those in team sports. But we haven't taken any money just to avoid potential refunds if and when we're not able to continue using fields.
In the summer program, you have, and I don't remember where we left off, the summer program, you haven't started taking applications. That's because obviously it's the same situation where we're in trying to get guidelines passed out to us to know what we can do. So you haven't taken any applications, right?
No, we have had a handful of inquiries and we have a list of parents who are waiting for contact back as soon as we have an answer of which direction we're moving. And before we take those registrations and start, you know, filling up a program, we need to know exactly the safest method we're going to be running from normal drop-off procedures in the morning, checking temperatures if we have to, all the safety protocols and have everything set in stone before we really start taking those registrations in.
So does anyone else have any other questions with regards to park and rec?
Well, Ralph, just sort of a comment. Then we don't really know what our revenue is going to be. Because we don't even know for sure if we're going to be able to have this summer play, like the summer program, correct?
No, we don't. I mean, as you know, I probably have mentioned, I think I mentioned one of our meetings that we, you know, Nate has met with the school admin and I've been part of those meetings. And there are conversations about if, you know, there's some sort of way to collaborate between the school and park and rec to try to offer something unique. But, you know, we're, again, the schools are waiting for summer education guidelines. Nate's waiting for elementary ed guidelines that'll drive summer camps and some park and rec association guidelines. So it's difficult to really know what you're going to be able to offer right now. I mean, the school talks about, they can offer distance learning because, you know, they obviously become pros at that at this point. But unfortunately, you know, Nate's doing his best to try to offer distance programs. But, you know, for the summer, that's a little bit more of a challenge. They want physically to have their children for the camp. Anyway.
Nate, there was something coming out tonight on outdoor recreation. I'm not sure how much that encompasses city park and rec or town park and rec, but you might want to take a look at that in tomorrow's news. There should be something about outdoor recreation.
Yeah, I believe that was more focused towards field usage, parks, playgrounds, more of the outdoor passive and active recreation side rather than group programming. And Rick, in regard to the revenue question, like Ralph was saying there, it, it's almost impossible to tell right now, even, even if we make that full decision to run the programs as close to normal as possible, with the guidelines being set in place and still the safety concerns around COVID-19, there's going to be so many people who want to send their kids to participate in these programs. And then you're going to have all the families who are still hesitant and are not willing to send their kids who would have normally sent them. So we're going to have very mixed numbers, I feel, whether we do or we aren't able to run the camp as normal this summer. So I think that's really one of the tough places we're sitting.
And one of the challenges we have is that, you know, we've talked about it, is that in the event you don't have a camp and now parents have to find an alternate solution on how they deal with the summer, the risk is that we could, you know, learn to lose that capacity that makes summer camp viable going forward. We could lose the numbers. So it's, it's nerve wracking because you're trying to figure out what you're going to do. And it's, it's the largest program we get and get, you know, the town gets engaged with, with regards to park and rec. And it's right now, like, just like the uncertainty with schools, it's a big, a big question mark that we're dealing with. Anyone else have any comments or point out things in revenue or expenditures for park and rec?
And park and rec, I mean, the only thing that I could add is the transfer really pays for everything other on salary, other than the team payroll. It pays for your contractual services, it pays for your repairs, it pays for your utilities, it pays for your commodities and a little bit with your equipment purchases. The programmatic side of it kind of comes out from the programmatic revenue. So, you know, that's kind of what your transfer, your transfer is more or less your fixed cost within reason. So that's why that transfer is kind of where the transfer is.
Thanks. Any other park and rec comments? Okay, so I guess that brings us to the capital improvement plan, page one thirty-five. So I mean, when you look at the list, we have a couple items that have to do with, one item with park and rec, two items with townwide, with the town. And then you have four items specific to the Board of Education in terms of funding that we talked about for capital. The bottom of the page has the funding that has to do with the low sub funds that we get from the state. So I open up for any comments with regards to capital improvement plan.
I have a question. Phillip, are there any items here that you feel have either already been accounted for or will be accounted for?
Oh, he's on mute. You, we need, we need Phillip unmuted. There he is. You're a good fellow.
Thank you. So, so the Board of Ed has not, at this point, identified any of these projects for us to be able to accomplish. It is within our possibility and we will continue to monitor the budget. We still, tonight, we, we took a look at projected savings yet again in a much more specific way. And what's important to note is that we have not fully identified how we're going to come down from the original proposed budget or adopted budget by the Board of Ed to the proposed for a select woman's budget. So that's got to be our first step to do with any projected saving. We'd begun to make some purchases that will help bring us down to that two point eight mark that Susan had presented back in April. But we, you know, we, we got to continue to, to work on this. And as we get closer to the end, we can be in better shape. I'd like to say to you that we could handle the purchase of the floor scrubber and you could take that out. Yeah, you know, I'd like to say that some of our technology devices, you might be able to, to take out as well. You know, I've told Susan, we'll play and help you as much as we can, help the town as much as we can. It's just, I cannot give you a definitive answer right now.
Thank you, Phillip.
Phillip, how about the item that's the auditorium sound and speakers? I guess the only reason why this doesn't seem to be as critical for this particular year is I'm, I'm hard pressed to believe whether you're going to have auditorium activities.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but at the same, at the same point, one of our, one of our strongest programs is our music and theater arts program. And they are limited sometimes by those, by the antiquated sound system that we have. So, you know, this was one of the projects that we thought, that I thought would be hard to get accomplished. And the fact that it's here on a list and this close, I'd hate to see that particular one removed. You know, our, our arts program is, is just an exceptional program and I, and I want to support it as much as we can.
Yeah, and the only reason I bring it up is, from the standpoint is, I don't argue, I realize that arts and music are extremely critical. I'm just saying from the standpoint of, given the situation we're heading into, I'm not sure what it's going to mean for usage of the bigger facilities that you have at the school in the new, new, new school year. But that's what I meant from that standpoint.
Well, if you use that, if you use that ideology, then, then, okay, well then maybe look at the, the, the smart boards, the projectors and the project lead the way lab as, as something that could potentially be moved because we won't be using them as much. Again, they're, they're all important things. And I think that the Board of Ed will do whatever it can, if there are some monies left over, to, to address these particular items that you may not address this year.
Stephanie is waving. Stephanie needs to.
Sorry, I'm in the dark here. A part of that too is also the 2020 frequency changes that are going to be happening too. So a part of that is to.
Good point.
That as well.
Stephanie, you say that again, what's, what's it about?
Something about there's a change in the frequencies. I think it's coming up December first, that, something about the interference that will happen if we don't upgrade our system.
Well, we've had problems, we had problem, yeah, I'm sorry Stephanie, I cut you off. We had problems last year with a show where cellphone connectivity or, or the speakers or the sound system was pulling in the cellphone conversation. And I think that had something to do with the, again, antiquated system that we needed to upgrade so that that couldn't occur and it was a frequency, a frequency challenge.
And I do know there's something that's coming up at the end of the year that that's causing this to kind of get pushed. I mean, more about that, because he's in our attention.
Yeah, I just, I, I know that as we look at these, these numbers, knowing that we've just done, you know, six hundred, over six hundred thousand in capital and I believe over four hundred thousand in projects that have been done this year based on previous monies, we've had a pretty good capital program going. We've made some good investments based on some of the challenges. This is one of the places I think we're looking at because it has the ability to, to save some money without, you know, directly impacting. I mean, one of the big goals we have is, we don't want to impact teachers, right? If we, you know, that's, that's the last thing we want to do going into the year. This is one of the places where there's some money that allows us to look at that and try to get to where we have to go. I think part of the issue here is we've still got a, you know, we have a three hundred and, coming into tonight, I think we were looking at about a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar revenue gap. We identified, I think it's going to be about ten thousand less according to Tom. I think we're looking at an extra ten thousand in the investment. So we're just trying to figure out how to cut that gap because we certainly don't want to be looking at raising the mill rate to accommodate that. So it gives some, we, basically we have to find some extra real, real estate here to, to get down to.
We, you, you understand that, we, we get that, you know, you understand. You've been at the board table many, for many years. So you understand the conundrum that we face. But we do have a lot of capital costs and, and anticipated costs. And Susan mentioned the forty-one thousand dollars for Fund Eleven. I, I can't tell you the wonderful things that we've been able to do in my six-year tenure because we had that allocation and, and the ability to move some of our money over because there are ongoing projects always in those buildings.
I think that's one of the things we're hoping that with some of the potential savings, especially as they're coming into sharper focus, that we, we find that we can allocate, go after some of these things in a different way.
And, and you, you, you have my commitment to that, I, I understand that.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure that the seven board members understand that as well. But we still, I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that I was clear in saying that we still haven't met the, we still haven't come down from what our original proposed budget was down to the two point eight yet. So that has to be the first and foremost of, of our accomplishment before we would take a look at these items.
So, just so I understand, the handouts that we received previously then were drafts and we don't know?
Yep. So I think, and Susan, I'll show you tomorrow. I think that tonight we were able to get, we were able to look at a much more holistic vision of what the, what the, the entire budget. I think, you know, identifying where we could find cuts is one thing, but you got to look at the entire budget and that's what I wanted the board to do to say, okay, so here are the lines that we're expecting some, some overages. Well, here are some lines that we had unanticipated costs, for instance, special education. We all know that's a big challenge. So it's a balance. And so I wanted them to see the whole picture so that we had a better sense of where we were going toward the end of the year. And I told them that I would give them an update in two weeks in our first June meeting. There is identified savings, but.
Two weeks is a long time for us.
Yeah, these aren't we scheduled, we're scheduled to vote on a final budget next week.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we were hopeful that the options that were presented on this document that was shared very nicely by, by the Board of Ed, showing that the two point eight percent was easily reached and then the other options that may, we understand, have been additional potential cost avoidance. So that's not a given anymore, is what I'm hearing.
Oh, no, I, you didn't hear me say that, Susan. It is, it is important for us to make, I, the first and foremost, I want to end the year with, with, without exceeding my budget. And so we have done some purchasing for Chromebooks. We have done the Sightlines report and we have done the, the Sarcro goals. So I think we've, we've begun that process of just saying. So I think we've, we've begun that process of just saying, okay, here are some unidentified sum of money and, and we can dedicate that money toward, toward these items from, that were in the proposed budget. But, you know, that cut of $200,000 or so from what the board of ed approved and what you had proposed, we, we still have to identify additional money for that. And then there are cuts from the budget that need to happen in order that document that we shared with you, there were actual cuts that we had to, to take from the, from the budget. That would get us to that point of, of 2.8. And, and again, we felt reasonably we could, we could do that, but we haven't identified all that money yet.
So Phillip, tonight you identified another number, I know, during the board of ed meeting. I thought you mentioned something about that doesn't, that you'd already accounted for soccer goals in the Chromebooks. Does that mean that those numbers that would have been savings have already pulled out and would have been added to that number? I'm just trying to understand what that number represents.
It, it meant that the, these are items that were in the proposed budget that we've now taken out of the proposed budget in order to meet Susan's 2.8%.
No, but I mean, the number you shared is a potential savings.
Okay.
The number is 259, whatever you said.
Yeah.
Does that mean that those Chromebooks would have added to that 259, but you've already pulled them out because you already went there?
Yes.
Okay, then that actually...
Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me. I was, okay, that's, that's good. Okay.
Do the other selectmen have any questions on that?
All right, and I think that if the board of education is not going to meet, you know, until June, we'll have to make some type of decision before that. And I think then the board of ed would have to live by the decision that we've made, whatever those cuts were going to be. Is that correct?
Yes, we, we need to have a budget determined by the 27th of this month, which is next week.
Okay. Well, the guidance that Phil has given us so far is good. And I think the other thing that we were talking about is to see if we can reduce the whole budget in some way to get closer to the number that Jim was talking about. I think I tried to look at it somewhere between 300 and $400,000 reduction. So I think our work is, is cut out to try to see what we can do that's reasonable. And then, you know, communicate that to the board as we go forward.
Thank you. We are supposed to meet again tomorrow, starting at 7 o'clock. And we get any more information, we can certainly talk about that. And then at 7:30, there is a regularly scheduled meeting. We have one presenter on the Route 66 corridor study. And then after that, we'll end the regular meeting and go back to the workshop and see how far we can go. Depending on the information that we have and the comfort level that you have with it, you may need to have another special meeting next week in order to fine tune things. And you won't have it Monday because it's Memorial Day, so it would have to be Tuesday, which is 26th of May. So just to kind of give everybody perspective on the schedule and how we're trying to get things done and understand that there's so much unknown. It's very difficult. We don't even know where we are in terms of the needs, as Phillip pointed out, this year as well as the summer and into next year. We also don't know the outcome of maybe some further assistance to cities and towns from the federal government. And if that happens, that's to the good. There was some H U D money that came out. Some of those monies go in small cities' monies. Sometimes that goes every city and town, but a lot of the cities get those dollars. But we're constantly vigilant looking for additional revenues. But as I mentioned a few, few minutes ago, revenues are tough. It's easy to see the needs that everybody has in Portland and all the other towns in Connecticut. But it's the difficulty of knowing what we're facing in the future. So we'll do our best and we'll keep in mind the needs of our community balanced against the ability for our taxpayers to thrive. So are there any further questions that you'd like us to get answers to for tomorrow night? Rick?
Yes, maybe Phillip can answer it now or Stephanie. On the capital improvement plan, the technology upgrades, $60,000. Can you tell me a little bit what, what, what that includes?
So the list is a completion of a project lead the way lab. The operational budget has one part of it. The capital has the other part of it. We have a smart board and projectors which are part of a replacement cycle. We have a, Rick, a technology replacement cycle that Charles and his tech team created and, and so we're trying to adhere to that. And then we have the wifi access points. We want to continue that upgrade project. We've, we've done the high school, the secondary school, and now we want to move to Biz and Gildersleeve to get those access points replaced because they're aging. So that, that, those are our technology upgrades that are identified.
Okay. And while, while I got you, the other one, the security upgrades.
Yep.
Was that the work at Gildersleeve School or was that 18-5 or is that kind of spread around amongst multiple buildings?
Stephanie, I think it's spread around. Do you have any clarification?
Yeah, it goes over all the buildings. The number is a lot larger than that, obviously. So we're kind of just going to pick, you know, pick away at what we can, but it goes, I'm looking at the list now on my other computer here, it across all schools. It's a lot of replacement of doors in the schools that are unreparable, that are, you know, needed. Yeah.
Now, granted, granted, you gave us some, some money in the supplemental appropriation. But the list I'm looking at, that lists all of the security upgrades is $168,000. And so I think what she's referencing is the fact that there are numerous projects, you know, in every building. I think I mentioned before the, the upgrades to the interior of our high school and middle school complex. There are certain areas of the complex that, that, that our, our speakers can't reach, are where, where all school announcements or fire alarms cannot be heard in certain places. And so we want to make sure that we've upgraded that. We call them dead zones.
Yeah.
And I think Brownstone has, Brownstone and Gildersleeve have a few of those as well.
I don't want to keep people too much later since you are going to be joining us again tomorrow. So anything further? The only other thing that I might like to know is some perspective on priorities within the board of education. I know that there's many needs and they've been well documented and explained. And I know that there are some open positions of a substantial nature and how those get refilled. I'm not talking about direct teaching, but some of the administrative positions. Is it not always can't get everything? So is it these structural needs that you feel are very important to complete as opposed to staffing for next year? Or is it staffing over some of the structural needs?
It, it's a difficult question that, that, you know, I'm going to say staffing needs are paramount, especially as we go into a year of unknowns, especially as we go into the social emotional challenges.
Right.
You know, you have been so supportive, Susan, of us and of my vision of increasing some of the staffing shortfalls that we have had. You know, we didn't have reading specialists at the elementary schools. That's unheard of. We now do, you know, library and media specialists, counselors in every building. Thank God now we have three community health-based counselors. We're going, we're going to get one more. All of this has been very helpful and we're going to need it. So that is definitely a priority. We've made significant efforts in our curriculum reform and I'd hate to go backwards on that and, and not getting a top quality person to, to fill Charles's very big shoes in that, in that particular area. So of course I'm going to say that's the most important thing. You know.
Which goes to the whole topic of what we've been talking about constantly. And that is, you know, I know you're looking at the repairs and the current buildings and we've also talked about the need for a comprehensive approach to overhead expenditures of all town buildings, schools and as well as general government. And, you know, it's constantly something that an organization has to look at and that is the cost of its overhead expenditures as opposed to its operating. So those are some things that I know as a team we need to look at. And I had proposed and I hope we're able to continue to work with a group of three selectmen, three board of education members looking at how buildings, how infrastructure needs present and how we then proceed. And without togetherness on this, we're not going to get it done. So I again repeat the need for the two boards to work together and, and move ahead on that. And I would hope that within the sightlines that would occur. But I haven't, I haven't really heard that back from the board of ed. So I think that there is further discussion.
So we good? So we good for this evening? I'm hearing quiet from everyone, so.
Good.
It's late.
Very.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second? Thank you, Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Phillip, and thank you, Steph, and thanks to all the other directors and folks. I think Tom's still there and Bob, Mary, everybody. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
I take it everybody's...